Where's her voice? I said it. It's recording even though she didn't say it. Thank you. Commissioner House. Commissioner Ken Odell. Commissioner Van Damelin. Commissioner Nunenkamp. Commissioner Miller. Chair King. And Vice Chair LaBonte. And your ex officio this evening, Counselor Russ Sheldon. Thank you. There's no one else online, so. Can you check and see if your mic is on, Chair, please? There you go. Thank you, Chair King. The North Plains Planning Commission will conduct a quasi judicial public hearing on file number 22-198 Brent Hill Minor Modification of Condition of Approval. The order of business will be as follows. The Commission Chair will open the public hearing and ask for declarations of conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or personal bias. The Commission Chair will request the staff report. The Commissioners may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of the subject application will be orally presented, including the individual's name and address. The applicant will be invited to present oral testimony. The public will be invited to provide oral and written testimony on the proposed land use permit, first by proponents, then opponents, followed by those individuals who are neutral. Additional staff comments will then be presented. If opposing testimony is presented, the applicant will be provided an opportunity for rebuttal. Opponents will also be provided an opportunity to speak in regards to the rebuttal. The Commission Chair will call for Commission comments and discussion. The Commission Chair will close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a specific time and date. If the Commission Chair closes the public hearing, a decision will then be entered by the Planning Commission. The decision will then be entered into a final findings of fact order, which will then be mailed with a letter detailing the decision to all parties to the proceedings. Appeals of a land use decision must be received by the city recorder within 15 days following the date the decision is mailed to the parties. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the proceedings and must provide their name and full mailing address. Parties will be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by code and state law. The city municipal codes, zoning, and development standards specify applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes applies to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or land use board or to seek damages to the Washington County Circuit Court due to a condition of approval.
For file number 22-198 Brent Hill Minor Conditioning of Conditions of Approval at 7:05. Are there any of the Commissioners to wish to declare in this post any conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or by extension? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom that challenges any of the Commissioners to hear this hearing? Hearing or receiving none? Please get the staff report, the agency comments, any written testimony and recommendations and conditions of approval.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair King. Steve Miller, Planning Manager, City of North Plains. As we've already noted, today, we're here for a minor modification request to the Brent Hill Village conditions of approval for phases two and three. If you'd like to go to the next slide. I provided a staff report to the applicant on January 31st, and that was also provided as part of your packet. So if you want to go to the next slide.
I'm trying to figure out how to get to.
And so, as you can see here, this is the master plan for Brent Hill. The phases that are part of this request include phases one, two, and three, which are down at the bottom and over on the east and north side of the master plan area there. So that is, that's the portion of the project that's impacted by this request. The applicable code sections are 155025 through 155030, which are the application requirements and the review procedures, as well as section 155.588, which is the preliminary plat approval criteria, as the conditions are tied to final plating and things of that nature. We don't have any modification type criteria in our code. So we went to the next closest criteria we could find that would be applicable to the condition of approval. The applicant's request, the applicant is requesting approval of a type two minor modification to modify the condition of approval regarding the timing of the issuance of building permits in Brent Hill Phase Three in relation to the installation of the northbound left turn lane at Northwest North Avenue and Northwest Glencoe Road and Northwest Shady Brook Road. The current condition reads that prior to issuance of building permits for Phase 2.2, also known as Phase Three, complete installation of the northbound left turn lane with a minimum 100 feet of storage and adequate intersection illumination at the intersection of Northwest North Ave and Northwest Glencoe Road and Northwest Shady Brook Ave to county standards. Receive county acceptance of this improvement. The applicant is proposing prior to issuance of the 248 building permit for Brent Hill, complete installation of the northbound left turn lane with a minimum of 100 feet storage and adequate intersection illumination at the intersection of Northwest North Ave and Northwest Glencoe Road and Northwest Shady Brook Ave to county standards, and receive acceptance of this improvement. Next slide. In addition to these conditions, with the master plan approval for Brent Hill, there was a developer's agreement that also had language tied to this improvement. So I want to share that with you so you can kind of understand all the conditions that are around this improvement. The master plan, I mean, excuse me, the developer's agreement requires the developer shall install the same northbound left turn lane from Northwest Glencoe Road, Shady Brook Road, to North Avenue to county standards with the occupancy of the 258 single family dwelling consisting of 180 single family dwellings, 78 townhomes, as required by the master plan, which was exhibit 12 in the developer's agreement. The city confirms that there is officially existing right away for this improvement. The reason I wanted to bring all these together was so you could see that and also note that this particular development agreement condition is tied to the actual TIA that was performed for the overall master plan. And what that transportation impact analysis determined was that intersection there at Northwest Glencoe, Shady Brook, and North Avenue would begin to fail by the time we issued the 258 occupancy permit for the structures there. And so that is why the developer's agreement is tying it to the occupancy of the 258th home, because that's what the transportation impact study noted is when the failure would occur. And so, as you can see through the requested modification to the condition, the applicant is trying to rely on the condition from the developer's agreement, so they've become more in line with one another. The one unique thing about the proposal from the applicant is their proposal is actually more restrictive than what we currently have in the developer's agreement. So where the developer agreement says with the occupancy of the 258 occupancy permit, the developer is proposing with issuance of the 247th permit. So issuance is clearly more restrictive than occupancy, and 247 is more restrictive than 258. So they're actually making it more restrictive on them and upping the timing, if you will, for when the intersection will be improved. If you'd like to go to the next slide. And then, in addition to all that, there is another condition that was part of the approval for phases two and three in your approval and the planning commission approval. And that one required that prior to submitting a building permit for Phase Three, that the applicant would be obtaining a Washington County facility permit for the northbound left turn lane. And I reached out to their consulting team to find out where they were at in that process. And what I was told was that they have submitted for the facility's permit to Washington County and that they did receive their initial red line comments from Washington County on that application and that they've also responded to Washington County's red line comments on that application. So it's my understanding, and the applicant can probably speak to this a little bit more tonight, that obtaining the facility permit from Washington County is appearing to be imminent. It should happen sooner than later. So that has them on track now to start with the construction season in spring to begin the intersection improvements there at North Avenue and Glencoe and Shady Brook. So they appear to be meeting this condition here which would give them the opportunity to go and submit for building permits for Phase Three. So I'll let them elaborate that on a little bit more on where they're at, but it does sound like they're fairly close to achieving that condition. Next, please. So with all that in mind, in the staff report, as you saw, staff is recommending approval with a condition. And what staff did is they took, staff took the recommended or the proposed condition from the applicant and took additional language from the developer's agreement and essentially merged them to align with the 247 permits. And so what I have recommended is that prior to issuance of the 248 building permit, you shall have the intersection installed as required and receive acceptance for this improvement. And then I used the same breakdown, if you will, for the 258, but tied it to 247. And so now, within all three phases, they can build 176 single family dwellings and 71 townhomes in those three phases prior to having the intersection completed. Next slide, please. We did mail out notice to 250 residents around phases one, two, and three. We also mailed out notice to the fire marshal, and we did not receive any comments from anybody on this request. So as I noted, the staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the request because it does appear to be in our favor. It is more restrictive than what we currently have, and it does align much better with the condition in the developer's agreement. Should the planning commission agree with staff and approve the request, then what we would do is move forward to the city council to amend the developer's agreement to align with this condition of approval. So now we'll have the developer's agreement and the condition of approval reading the same. Last slide. And with that, I'm available for any questions you might have.
All right. There's one thing that I see going on through and out the slide that's referred to Shape Brook Avenue and Shape Brook Road and back. It's Shape Brook Road, everything should be consistent.
Those are the three roads, correct. That's the intersection, Shady Brook Road, Glencoe, and. My apologies.
Well, I mean, it may be from the old stuff, but it should all be consistent.
Good catch. It's true. It should be.
Any questions? Commissioner LaBonte.
Could you pull the microphone closer, please? Yes. We, we are, that's what we corrected today. And I told Stuart we'd pull up the corrected one.
Washington County really doesn't have a say on that per se because it's our condition of approval. I understand that. And the county is saying make the improvements, and they've submitted for those improvements. But we're saying, in terms of getting building permits, we want to have the intersection improved, right? Pardon?
So when this application was submitted, we don't know this Washington County because it's a city.
What I'm saying is the condition of approval is specific to the homes and the improvement to the road. Washington County is reviewing their plans for improvements to their roads. So they're the ones who are overseeing the plan review for us to make sure that it satisfies their requirements. But the condition is tied to when they can get a building permit. And so I don't need to reach out to Washington County to find out if that's okay because the TIA supports the request. Yes, and that's not, that's no surprise. It would make sense that Washington County would provide a recommendation to the planning staff at that time on a condition to make sure that the intersection there was improved prior to the impacts came online. And so, again, this proposed condition is even more restrictive than what we currently have. So I'm not, I'm not deviating in the path that's going to make it where the impacts are going to come online. And then, and then the intersection improvement is going to happen. What they're saying is we're going to make that intersection improvement even before Washington County wanted the improvement to be completed. So it's even more restrictive. Thank you. I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
Yeah.
It has no impact on them building their parks. They still need to build their parks. I'll let the applicant speak to that. I mean, as they're, as they're moving through and constructing the different phases, they need to make sure that each phase contains the elements that were approved as part of the master plan. So we're not going to get out of having to make the necessary improvements, especially parks. I would imagine that, you know, in my experience working with production home builders, they like to complete phases before they leave something behind. So I would imagine, even though they might be building a couple homes in Phase Three, they'll be wrapping up Phase Two as well at the same time. But again, I'll leave that to the applicant to ask for more detail.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
If you turn it on, yeah.
That come through at all? My outside voice?
That's mine, too.
So I think what I'll do is just stand right here to make this a little easier. My name's Garrett Stevenson. I'm legal counsel for Lennar. And I don't have a whole lot to say tonight because I'm going to turn this over to Lennar's. My address? It's 1211 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite 1900 Portland, Oregon 97204. I just wanted to address a couple of the questions that came up about Washington County and the status of this improvement and how we got to the point that we're at. When I went back and I looked at all of the decisions that led up to this point to try and figure out how this condition has sort of evolved over time. And the original condition actually basically punted and said, do the improvement whenever you guys figure out how to do the improvement. And then that was all resolved through the development agreements. And the original development agreement, as Steve mentioned, said we triggered this, what's essentially a left turn lane or a left turn intersection improvement. We triggered that at 258 occupancy. And over time, because this, as you all know, has gone through so many different iterations and so many plan reviews for the different phases, over time, that language sort of drifted away from where the development agreement originally was. Now, I can only assume, not having been involved at that time, but I can only assume that Washington County was made aware of the original condition when it came down for the original master plan. And so I don't think that there's anything new here that Washington County needs to worry about. It puts us exactly back where we were and actually a little bit more restrictive than we originally were when the city originally issued the approval for the master plan. I can't speak to whether Washington County got noticed, but I think it's typical city practice to send notice to all the affected jurisdictions. But in this instance, we don't believe that Washington County will have any concerns because, again, it's always been everybody's assumption that we're going to be able to do up to 258 occupancies. Now we're talking about 247 building permits. And so I just want to clarify that. The reason why, and you're going to hear a little bit more about this, but the reason why we're asking for this change is that there was a lot of flexibility built into the original master plan approval. And for whatever reason, that was sort of trimmed back, I think. And given the economic climate, interest rates, and so forth, we want to have the flexibility to provide a wider variety of housing types beneath the current market demand. This condition allows us to do that up to a point. As you saw in the condition, there are certain restrictions on the number of townhomes versus, you know, standard, single family homes that we can build. But this allows us, again, to have that flexibility. It was originally baked into the master plan, and it's still, by the way, baked into the development agreements and all the development agreements that have come in behind that. So, I mean, from a legal standpoint, it's a housekeeping item, but there's a real practical reason for it so that we can provide a wide variety of housing. So unless you guys have any questions for me, I'll turn it over to the PCD and they can take it through the application.
You want to sit?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. I am Warren Jackson. I'm a project planner with PCD. And for the record, my address is 12564 Southwest Main Street in Tiger. So tonight, I'm representing Lennar in their request to modify the condition of approval for Brent Hill Master Plan refinement in the Phase Two subdivision which were case numbers 20-046 and 20-047. So is previously said, the original condition requires Lennar to install the northbound left turn lane at North Avenue and Glencoe Road prior to issuance of building permits in Brent Hill Phase 2.2, which we know, the modification is being requested to allow issuance of up to 247 building permits prior to completing installation of the turn lane. Now, with this modification, we, again, we're not speaking to delay construction of the turn lane. We would just like more flexibility in the home building schedule. An approval of the modification will support construction of more townhomes and homes on the small and the medium sized lots, which are located in Phase Three. So approval will also clear up some discrepancies between the original conditions of approval, the development agreement, and that transportation study done by Lancaster Mobley. The requested modification is, once again, is more restrictive than the development agreement for the Brent Hill Master Plan, which was adopted January 6, 2020. And as you can see here, the approved agreement permitted occupancy of 258 homes before installation of the left turn lane. And the requested modification is actually 11 homes less than approved in the development agreement and ties the condition to the number of building permits issued instead of occupancy, which will be easier to track. It's my understanding that to assist city staff, Lennar has been providing monthly permitting and occupancy reports to keep track. And the requested modification, like we've said, it does align with Lancaster Mobley's intersection analysis, which was conducted in December 2020. And as you can see here, their study concluded that the left turn lane is warranted after construction of the 247 dwelling in Brent Hill. And again, we're asking for approval of this modification to allow Lennar to better satisfy the market demand for the townhomes and homes on smaller lots in Brent Hill here in North Plains. So to better illustrate this, the next couple of slides show the number of types of homes approved during the planning phases and the location of the building permits submitted and issued as of January 30th. So as you can see here, Brent Hill Phase One was approved to provide 158 total homes, including townhomes and homes on the smaller lots. And as of January 30th, there's 132 building permits, which have been issued, and another 15 permits that have been submitted. And the next slide. So this is illustrating how Phases One and Two of Brent Hill were approved to provide a total of 240 homes, which with Phase Two, this now includes 38 homes on medium sized lots and 25 homes on the larger lots. And as, at the end of January, there's 149 building permits that have been issued and another 35 which were submitted. And you can sort of see here that there's only a small fraction of building permits for homes on the medium and larger lots that have been submitted, yet most of the building permits for the townhomes and the smaller, the homes on the smaller sized lots in Phases One and Two have already been submitted. So this last exhibit just illustrates that modifying the condition to permit building permits be issued in Phase Three, it'll support construction of more townhomes and smaller sized homes. and smaller sized homes, which attracts a greater number of buyers. So that is the end of my presentation. And today in our audience, we do have representatives from Lennar and our engineer at PCD, Patrick Espinoza, who can answer your questions regarding engineering side of constructing the turn lane. And thank you for your time.
Any questions of the test line? Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
There any proponents wishing to testify, those testifying papers up? Any on the Zoom?
There's no, nobody on Zoom, so. No, no.
Is there any opponent wishing to testify against?
No. Nope.
The audience, okay. Is there anyone in the audience of the Zoom wishing to testify, not necessarily for or against, it's neutral?
None on Zoom?
The hearing none. There's no other testimony, we don't need any rebuttal. So is there any questions of the planning commission before we close the public hearing? The session? The hearing at 7:31. Entertaining motion.
I'm going to approve file number 22-198 Brent Hill minor modification of condition approval as written.
It has been moved by Commissioner LaBonte, second by Commissioner Houck for approval of file number 22-198 Brent Hill minor modification of condition for approval. As presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who propose? None? unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Item number eight is new business. Sorry, can't see. We have, A is the same head word. Extension request? This is now just a, looking for some type of approval vote, or are we just doing consensus or what do you want from the planning?
I believe you can do it as a consensus, but if you'd like to take a formal vote, that's usually a little more helpful.
Is there anyone that has any questions on the extension? Is the planning commission decision to consent or do you want a follow up?
Let's take a vote on whether they want to vote or consent.
That would be, uh, we don't have a problem with you. Does this extend to 22, but does this have a new number now or?
22-003.
Yep.
Okay, 22-013. Okay, so this is a request for a one-year extension. So all of them favor the sense for file 23-1013, say aye?
Aye.
Those both unanimous? Okay, item number nine, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished, unfinished business?
Not that I'm aware of.
That I'm aware of.
I was kind of looking to you to see if you had any unfinished business, but I don't have any unfinished business for you. In terms of discussing the sign code that that is unfinished, I agree. It's a little bit on hold right now as we have really too many things going on at the moment to be able to bring that to you at this time. So thank you Commissioner LaBonte for making that note, but yeah, we do want to come back and visit the sign code to that. And we have received a sign permit application for the Shell gas station there to change it into space age. Maybe some of you have heard that. So what they're proposing to do right now is to change out the column sign, just taking the shell off and putting on space age and leaving the same digital signage and then also adding additional, right below space age noting the market that's there as well. But it won't change the square footage or the dimensions of the monument sign or the column sign. They also wanted to update the pole sign, the legal non-conforming pole sign. They did propose to do some additions to it that are not allowed. So we told them that, you know, they could not do those or limited to the 154 square feet that exist there today and that you would not be able to add on additional digital gas pricing to that since it doesn't have that today. They would just be allowed to take the face off of Shell and put a new face on this space station in that same dimension. So they haven't decided what to do with that yet. They are going back to the drawing board on that to see what they want to do. So that's, that's where the signs are at today.
Just speaking of signs, I know that Columbia Bank is modifying as of March 20th. So I'm assuming they're going to be changing their signs, so I don't know if they reached out to the city.
Not at this time. That's the first I've heard of it. I wouldn't even know who to contact, but they know where I work.
I'm wondering if they're aware that they may do that.
Being, being someone like that. Absolutely. And if they do without a sign permit, we're going to let them know they need a sign permit.
Alright, so I guess one of the other things is, as far as unfinished business, we talked about doing more workshops and things like that. So are we now kind of on hold for workshops or?
Well, you know, it was ironic, you know, at the time we talked about that, we really didn't have any new applications. And since that time, we've gotten quite a few new applications. We received this application that you had tonight. We have the new public works facility coming to you next month. We have Far West that's still kind of figuring out how to get their application complete, but I expect to get some information from them anytime now, which will put that one back on the clock. And so we just kind of got hit with all these applications at the same time. So it really put me a little bit behind in being able to bring additional stuff to you. And so once I get a little more caught up, I want to get back on to the sign permits with you to wrap that up and then decide how we want to move forward with maybe a formal text amendment to the sign code so we can prepare that and then bring that before you.
Also, just a reminder to any of the commissioners that you have items that you want to start working on workshops too, to let myself know or Steve and that we can pass it on. Because if, as you said, once we get in position to do that, we want to start working on that because we definitely are going to have to be also working on zoning codes for the expansion areas.
And that's a very good point, and that probably is something we want to talk about in terms of our efforts when it comes to addressing the code. Because there could be a lot of improvements to the code that are necessary to address the UGB expansion to get that code ready for the land that's going to come in. Instead of maybe just piecemealing the sign code and then another issue and another issue, I think what we need to do is talk about addressing the whole code in its entirety. And that could be something where the city might need to work with a consultant like 3J to assist us with that because that's a, that's a big lift and we certainly wouldn't have the staff to do that ourselves. But I think in the short time I've been here, I've heard that it's not one or two little items in the code that people are concerned about. It's really looking at the whole code and making sure that it's where you folks would like it to be. So when the annexations start coming in, we're prepared for that.
Well, and I think one of our main concerns, I think Commissioner LaBonte will read, is that when it comes to the industrial and the commercial, our NC code, which is the holding code is terrible for addressing that. So we, I'd like, as I had mentioned before, I'd like to get rid of all the NC codes and re-some all that property and put it in its appropriate code.
Yeah, and that's why I think we need to have that big conversation about, you know, let's open up the whole code versus pieces of the code.
We've already done that study that identified sections of the code that need to be reviewed prior to any UGB expansion. So we already have that out.
That is fantastic. All I got to do is talk to the right people, I'm sure they'll let me know that. And then we'll continue to work with the consultants probably and work on a proposal that we can bring forward to you. But it sounds like those conversations happened prior to me coming on board. And so just need to run back with the city manager and probably 3J or consultants to better understand those past conversations.
Sounds like the expansion is being very, very close. The expansion is being very, very close to be finalized. And it sounds like the commercial and residential is a little less easier to bring it into the city limits as it is. It sounds like the residential can happen like immediately, so.
In certain areas, yes.
It's very important, so.
I totally agree with you. And I do agree that when you're talking about certain areas of the city in terms of where we're looking at expanding, some have more capability in the short term than others to go forward. So it is a priority. And again, as Commissioner LaBonte mentioned, it sounds like you guys have had some of these conversations already. They haven't all gotten to me. And so I think what we need to do is bring all the minds together, probably at the planning commission because that's generally where it starts with a recommendation from you on the code. So we can get it to the city council so they can make a final determination on that. So we are making notes, I'll raise it up with the city manager and find out where we're at with that process and what we can do to, you know, jumpstart it now since we're getting ready to start holding hearings for the UGB expansion with the planning commission.
The other comments on unfinished business? Very none? Okay, item number 10 is the land use applications and the 3J report. See any 3J report?
Didn't, didn't get it from them.
Didn't get it? Well, there you go. Land use applications seem, as I talked to Mallory, it seemed like they were, weren't in, none of them in December. So Lennar didn't take out any building permits in December?
I don't think so.
I don't think so, you had a lot of them come in in January, they sent in about 13 or so that she mentioned during the presentation there. And I have a couple more that are still pending for them, but nothing towards the end of December. I think everybody was on vacation.
I'll just throw it out since I'm sure other commissioners probably think about it, but the house that was on Glencoe was taken down prior to finding out they needed a permit or halfway down. Then they filed, but then took it down with not knowing the headway to get the building.
Yeah, that did not go well at all, to be honest with you. We really made a good faith effort before he took the home down to let him know what he needed to do. And he stopped in and I shared with him everything that he needed to do in addition to working with us. He had to go to Washington County. He came in a couple of days later and turned in a building permit for us, but it wasn't, it wasn't that great. I told him I needed a site plan and I told him that about seven times. And I finally got one about the eighth time, but by the eighth time, he had already started tearing down the house. And because I can't be in the office and on the streets at the same time, I found out about it at lunchtime when I went out to go get some lunch and I was like, oh shoot, he jumped the gun. So then I was like, oh, you got to stop, you know, and go down to Washington County and, and, you know, here's your approval from the city. Here's your release letter, that's what I asked you to wait for. So now you can go down there. He ultimately did get to everybody, he did get to CWS, he brought in all those approvals, we have copies of that. But by that time, the house was a pile. And so once he finally got all the rest of his permits, it was just picking the piles up and putting them into the trash.
I'll break you to a question. Is there, is there a requirement for the city, there's abatement reports before they do that?
Not that I'm aware of. I've not seen that. Typically, that would be the county since they're handling our building permits, but I didn't.
No, you mean like liens against the property or?
Very standard for all cities and counties that have that because now you have all that stuff blowing around in the area, so.
And I completely agree with you, but because the city does not have a building department, that is handled by the building department, that aspect, it's not a planning function. And so that is being reviewed by CWS and Washington County. So when they're issuing their permits, they're putting conditions on their permits for wattle bags, for silk fencing, for erosion control, for abatement, that all comes through their permitting. We don't have that in our office right now.
So we don't have the ability to ask Washington County to require that as a public, for a government?
Since we contract with them and they have the professional services, we're relying on them to make sure that they're applying all the Oregon codes appropriately to whatever building permits they're issuing for our county, or for our city, excuse me.
I know when we updated our code last year, we went through asbestos, we went through devil which, and we went through all of that for our code. I don't know if it's all in there because we've talked about if it's an older building, you have to have it inspected. You have to pull a sample. I mean, there's a lot of things to do a demo on a building, I want to make sure.
And that's what I'm saying, by him going without the permits, he basically took that away from Washington County to be able to do that. But again, that is all handled by, we don't handle that. We don't have that ability.
What he was told to do is just a prime candidate that he should have defined. That's just malicious, this outright disregarding what he was told to do.
I don't disagree. But I don't make all the decisions at the city, I just make a few of them.
Is it down to soil over there too for oil to fall?
So did he just submit a permit to, for the building, or did he submit a building permit for construction as well?
To, to the city or to the county, he submitted for a demo permit. Yes. At this time, he said he doesn't have a plan for the property, but due to squatters and other hazards with the home, he felt it was in the best interest to have it scraped from the property. So it was no longer a concern for him in terms of the liability. But again, yes, we don't want to do it after the fact, we want to do it on the front end. And, you know, I was very grateful that the public works crew saw him out there getting ready and stopped him and directed him into our office. And we, I can't tell you how many times I told him the process and it just did not sink in. So, you know, a fine probably is right, you know, maybe, maybe he'll remember the next time if he has to do something in North Plains.
Is there, well, is there some process that we, I mean, that we have already in place to do filing or?
Yes, we do have a code that allows us to find.
Okay, I'm just wondering if that's something we should be looking at, that, if that, whose call is that?
You know, I would, I would say that that's probably the city manager's call. I can, I can certainly encourage him and tell him that I think it's a good idea, I can recommend it, but I don't see that as being my, my particular call.
I agree.
Usually we have the same problem on the property that they're ready to do something, there's three houses there, they get the tear down, so.
You're talking about the GOA property?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the thing is, I mean, it's a rule, every, so. Well, and I guess I would encourage the city manager to follow up on us. Also, we should get follow up on is Washington County requiring within their demo permits, if people get them, that there is the abatements and things like that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Just so we have, you know, so we know that stuff is happening, it's done right. We need to protect the city no matter what. Even if Washington County doesn't cover it, we should make sure it's covered.
To the extent that we have something to cover it and then inspector qualified, yes, I agree 100%.
Alright, well, Warren, let Andy know.
I put his name right there.
Yes, I received a note from Lennar on the way out the door to one of your questions and they're telling me that the Phase 2 park is in progress and it's scheduled to be done in late spring 2023.
Alright, so now for that, we'll move on to. Alright, nothing else with that. We'll move on to item number eleven. Is the planning commission comment?
I've been serious with all that. American flag is supposed to touch the ground. If it does, it's supposed to burn.
We get city staff to make sure that gets.
Yep.
Yeah, it seems we, we seem to have a problem with the, the flag pole because we have pulled it up. We pull it up and then by the time we come back, it's gone down. So, you know, it's one of these up and down type of deals. I think we ordered probably two new poles because it.
Or we can put it, we can put it there if everybody can see it on the wall.
But yeah, the pole seems to be worn out.
Alright, any other planning commission comments? Anyone have anything? Go ahead.
I hope that our city does not agree with our city and state to ban natural gas for new construction. I just.
What?
Eugene banned.
Yeah, for housing.
The biggest housing crisis and low income.
And low cost.
And low cost energy. Natural gas is the cheapest way. Electrical, you know, PG films have just skyrocketed right now.
I believe it's actually anything on Tuesday. I read the article.
It was given on the news.
Southern, they did do that actually.
Well, if you're talking about Southern like California. Hey, any other? Comments?
I, I, I just, my quote question, I, it may be it's more of a just send, send an email to Steve, but in looking at tonight's application for the extension for Santa Fe Bridge, I don't know, I just, I know we have it in there that only subdivisions flats can apply for a two year extension. Seems to me that when you have these nonprofits that are at the mercy of grants or fundraising to only allow the one year permit for a project that might take those three, four years to get enough funds for it. I don't know, since I get served, so.
I would encourage you to look at that in part of your code updates and I encourage you to allow all design review and, and other land use applications have a two year approval. I think that is important. That's very common to have a two year. And then the subdivisions could have more, especially if there's phased subdivisions with multiple phases where it would be maybe two years for the first phase, another year for the third phase, another year for the fourth phase, you know, something to that nature. That's kind of how our code is written right now that subdivisions get two years approvals. And everything else is a one year approval. But if you were to go to, and I can pull it up from you on, on many codes, two years is very common for, for an approval. And usually what that means, that duration of approval is that they've initiated the land use application, right? So maybe for a subdivision, it would be that they went and obtained a grading permit to start grading the, the project. Or maybe it's a building permit for the first home. Same with the, with design review. It could be obtaining the facility permit to start, you know, grading the site and getting it ready for building the, the structure. Or maybe it's tied to the issuance of the building permit for the structure. But those are common ways to say that they've initiated the use on the property. They no longer need an extension. You know, they're, they're actually now operating under the conditions of approval of the land use decision. That's a good question. You know, we depend on different projects. You know, once, once they move on from the grading permit and they're actually operating under a building permit, building permits can stay active for quite a long time, as long as you're scheduling regular inspections. And so that would be something for you to discuss, you know, when you're looking at the code in terms of durations of approval, what you want to tie that to. So we know that the application is now initiated. We don't need to do an extension anymore. And we're just operating under the conditions of approval at that time. And I think that's always a tricky one is the trigger. What, what triggers the initiation of the land use application? You know, is it, what permit stage are they, do they no longer need an, an extension?
Yeah, the other thing, just to follow up on that is the designer view application for a one year approval or for a two year subdivision that costs the same amount. But yet to get a one year extension, you pay fifteen percent of what that is. And to get a two years extension, you get paid fifteen percent of what that is. So two year people get perhaps price for the one year after they don't.
Yeah, yeah, certainly, certainly things that we can improve on. Absolutely.
Well, that's a city council piece. Comments? Anything for city council? Our ex officio commissioner, councillor Sheldon. Do you have anything for one?
First, I appreciate the work of the body of planning commission. And it's a, it's an important delivered body for our future. And I think I would at least echo from the council. We're here to support you. I think that was clear in our last decision. And I think that we certainly want to be prepared for what's going to come ahead of us. So I think with that, having deliberation and vision about clarity in our code and cleaning up our code and keeping that process going, I think is important because we certainly want to avoid through the use of good common sense rule and the rules that are established not only by the state, but that we conform to a large extent and we can push forward in anticipation of what will come before us at some point in time. While we have no idea when that might be, certainly we're on the precipice of that. And I think it's certainly probably in the former rhythm than the latter, but I just, I would, I would suggest that you continue the deliberation with the, you know, with some clarity and and collaboration. And I probably lastly, I would encourage you to communicate if you have questions, communicate to your, your counselors and, and the city staff and communication through communication, good communication. There's a lot of things we can solve and maybe head off. Maybe something that, that is either seen or could be foreseen in that effort. So with that, thanks. And then I think to Commissioner Lavante's comment, I don't think there's any sentiments, sentiment in terms of any order on any level of going towards that restriction of the natural gas issue. That's just extremely at an outer limit of what common sense is about. That's all my thoughts.
Thank you for taking that one. No problem. I had to come and listen for it. Yeah. Yes. Okay, so any item number twelve, staff comments?
Just a brief one. I just wanted to let you know that the Rusty Pissin property has sold to a very nice couple who's been in this area for quite some time. They are looking to open up kind of a, probably not your typical antique shop, but an antique shop that with a little flair to it. They actually, our family has been in the area for a hundred and forty seven years. So they have a lot of farming artifacts and history of the area, pictures, things of that nature that they would like to offer for people to look at and to purchase. One of the things we're working with them on right now though is they have a tight budget. So, you know, one of the things that happens when you change a use in a building that's not the same use that was there before, they do go through design review, which gives us an opportunity to have another bite at the apple for that property, if you will, to bring it more up to current code compliance for what we would like to see for resident or commercial properties. The big thing for them that they're struggling with is to pave that parking lot is an expense they might not be able to do. So we're trying to figure that out right now, but they are willing to put on a sidewalk along three eleventh. We probably can help them with the sidewalk along commercial because that's part of our bigger downtown improvement plan. So we want to make sure that that improvement matches what we're doing there and we don't have that adopted yet. So they're also willing to put in a lot of landscaping to beautify that corner. And they also want to put an awning on the front there that the front part of the building that faces out to commercial. So it kind of have like a Western kind of lean to type of a shed roof there over the door. And then they'll take out that door that provides access for the garage and put in an additional kind of a, like a Western style swinging kind of door there, probably more for just appearance than, than use. But really liked meeting with them last week and encouraged by them wanting to do something nice to that property.
You have anything else?
Not at this time.
If there is, no other commission business, our next regular meeting is March eighth here, unless otherwise told.